Okay, Robin can chime in if I screw something up. Going down the existing budget. The town of Newcastle. Maximum we can do is 1.46 for the incoming year if we need to. Previous to last year was 1.41. Judy, is that correct? You're only permitted to go 1.414, I'm sorry. You're approximately allowed to go up. About 56,000 maximum increase?
No, it's only 33,694.
36, okay.
No, 33,00694. From last year's budget.
Okay. All right. It shouldn't make any difference, but that's all right. I just wanted to know what the cap is. So we're talking 36, okay, okay.
33.
33.
694, yeah.
All right, running on down. The interest and earnings, we had budgeted for 33, but with the reduction in the interest rates going forth. Robin, do you have any idea what we're going to get for this year? Can Robin hear me? Robin? Robin?
I'm gonna send her a message.
Yeah, she can't. She just texted me. She can't hear you.
Robin, can you hear any of the rest of us? If you can hear any of us, if not, you should probably reboot or at least hang up and reconnect.
Okay, I'm gonna call her on. Let me call her on this now.
I know I heard her speaking, so that way it was working.
Ed? It doesn't seem to be hearing us either.
I, I hear you.
Oh, you hear us?
Yeah. I'm here.
Can you hear them?
No, no, I can't hear them.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Can you?
Judy, ask her to just hang up and reconnect.
Okay, Ron and Carrie want you to hang up and reconnect.
Okay, will do.
Okey dokey, bye.
All right, we can continue. We'll go back to that when she comes back on. Now, LoSaP. Originally last year. We had budgeted in the 130 range. We voted to increase it to bring us more in the line. I see no particular reason not to continue with that approximately 172. Because we're still. Underfunded on LoSaP from what it was historically. So irrespective of what they come back with. I think we should be spending in the 165 for 180 range we can determine next year later on, but. I think we've got to continue to sustain somewhat higher than they're asking for for some number of years. So I think we can leave that tentative 180 alone. Provision for Social Security.
Can you hear me?
I can hear. Who am I talking to now?
Robin?
Robin, can you hear us? She might have to check that her speaker is or volume is turned up.
Okay, let me just text her.
The other option is headphones if she has any.
High class operation here.
What?
Okay, you can hear me?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to use another monitor. Obviously, that wasn't working.
Okay, good, good to know. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, back to the A2401 interest and earnings. Last year, we had budgeted 33. But that's been going down this year. Do you have any idea what's a realistic expectation for next year?
So, are you talking to me?
Yeah.
All right, and you have to start again, I'm sorry.
On the interest and earnings.
Interest and earnings, oh, we went back down now. We're down to 0.45, so. You know, I can extrapolate based on what we earn, you know, for the month of October or September and give you a number.
If you'd figure September, October, multiply it by 12 and give us that figure.
Yeah, I think this is way high, yeah.
I mean, there's no question with the, with the reduction in interest rates, it's a 33. Has got to be as income, we've got to decrease that.
Right. Will do.
All right. Judy, I sent you a note on the question of 1099. May you do, does send me a reply?
No, I, first I didn't understand. Can you hear me? Because I can't see anybody for some reason. I lost. Carrie, how do I get back, how do I get back to seeing everybody?
In the top corner where it says Speaker View, there's another button that looks like a Lego. If you click that, then you can get all of the Brady Bunch. Upper right.
There's only five, right? Five people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why can't I do that?
Did you run that figure, Robin?
No, I can, I can give you August interest, but I can't do September and October yet.
How much was August?
I'll get it for you, one sec.
That's really crazy. I may have to go out and come back in because I just don't see. All right, let's do it again.
We can see you.
Oh, okay, I can't see anybody, but that's all right. Um, yeah. When I spoke with Robin, there was an option whether or not you wanted to. To either be. You know, get it as a 1099 or as a payroll check.
Well, you disappeared now.
She's coming right back.
Well, you're back now.
If that's a problem, you know. I mean, we can talk about it.
Robin did talk to the auditor. And he said most departments do it on a 1099 basis rather than pay Social Security. We have two on 1099 right now and you on Social Security.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not really Social Security. It's just, it's just taking, you're taking taxes out for the federal and state tax. Or should, so that's fine. I'll, I'll talk to Robin if you prefer that, that we'll definitely do that.
Well, I'm thinking in terms of consistency, and that's what the auditor is recommending.
Okay. No problem. Does it save you guys money? I mean, not doing, taking the taxes?
I don't know whether it saves money or not. I didn't do the math.
Well, it saves the, of the, the fire department from paying the FICR Medicare share of everyone's salary, not a big number. And it just saves on purchasing W2s for, you know, two people and a program to run, that kind of thing. That's all.
All right. Oh, we'll chat tomorrow on that.
Okay.
So Eric, so when we're talking about interest, you know, obviously, we're talking about the reserves that are quite high now, so. We would have to also determine if. You expected to. Use the reserves for any reason, you know, purchasing a truck.
We have a line item for income of 33,000 for interest and earnings. From last year.
Right, so, so for instance, in our now account, which is just our budgetary account, we earned. $890 in interest for this past month. It's going to be less than that next month because the rate went down. But the reserves also earn good interest, but it depends on if we're going to keep the balances in the reserves or we're spending them.
Well, this, it's still a case, though. That we shouldn't be going into the reserves to any great extent.
Okay.
With the possibility of late next year. Assuming the bond issue passes and then you start going after bid and stuff like that, it's going to push to next summer before any demand. Is probably even considered on those accounts. But the question we're talking about is with the interest rates having dropped from 1.9 to now, what, 0.7, 0.8, something like that? 0.45. That's 75% from what we were looking at last year. And last year, we were budgeting income of 33. Now, if you take 800 as the normal income. You'd be looking at approximately $10,000 as the income rather than 33.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you just want to budget for the interest on the now account, which is the, the budget account, not the reserves, you would be comfortable budgeting 10,000.
Yeah, but we have to show if we're going to get it on the reserves. Are the reserves accounted for separately other than on these, on this thing that you put out?
Well, we actually.
An income was both the, was what both the reserves. And the regular interest, we're getting everything across the board, right?
Well, we, we never budgeted. We did not budget. So this 33,000 is an actual to date what we've earned, but we did not budget anything. So this is plus, this is positive cash.
So what you're saying, Tony, this 33 is what we've earned as of today's date?
Correct.
For the prior, for the.
Yes.
Correct. It has nothing to do, we didn't put a budget on either interest earned.
If you want to budget 10,000, you could.
You see here, it says January 1st to September 10th.
Okay, but well, we're setting up a budget for next year.
Right.
Shouldn't we normally have a line item of what we anticipate as income?
We never did. We never did as far as, we, mostly the expenses, the budget was just expenses, not income. Not earn, like, real property taxes. We didn't do that on, when you, we did the budget, it's only expenses.
Well, the real property taxes are based on what we tell the town to raise.
Correct.
As far as the budget is concerned, but we still put in 1.414. On the thing, which is what we probably told the town to collect on the same thing for Mount Pleasant.
Ask Robin, we don't have to put the income part, correct, Robin?
Because we didn't include the contract for Mount Pleasant for the 200,000 either. Our budgeted 1,426 is just expenditure lines that are offset by taxes.
Correct. That's all we have to show in our budget, correct?
Yes.
That's by state. That's all we have to show.
Correct.
From, from running a business. Shouldn't we normally show, enhance this by showing our basic expected total income?
Yeah, we can. But as far as doing the budget, we don't, we don't show that, the income part.
Okay. Well, in any case, I'd like to see if we could come up with some sort of projection of total expected interest income for next year based on what we're looking at. We, we got till next month to, to come up with some sort of idea, but I'd like to, because I want to get some ideas what we're going to get, if anything.
Right.
Rates are going down, maybe not. I mean, you're getting negative interest in some checking and banking accounts from the banks, et cetera.
You know, she could deal with it with the balances and multiply by 0.45. And get a figure.
Well, that might, okay, we can do that.
Right?
Yep.
That'd be the best, the best one.
Okay. Workman's comp, that should remain pretty much the same.
So that's the one that we've paid in full, the 56,000?
Correct.
So we, you know, you have room there to decrease that if you needed another line to have it.
Okay, no, what I'm just saying is that probably there's been no rate increase. We, we should. The type of, of charge made by the Workman's Comp Bureau. Is not subject to the loss of business as it is with most industries. Because it's based on population, so therefore, I'm simply saying is that unless there's a tremendous increase in workman's comp claims, that figure should remain pretty much constant.
That's 72,000 for the budget.
Well, we budgeted 72, but the 56.
Right.
Is what we paid for the full year, and that's actually. Probably not far different from what it's going to be for next year.
Want to drop this 72 down to 60?
60, absolutely.
Okay.
The provision for Social Security, what we're going to do with that, that eight?
Well, if we go, if we decide to.
Go 1099.
Go to 1099, we take that out completely.
So we want.
Leave it for now. Because this is going to be. Next month, which will give us a chance to take a look at it. Now, on the three compensations. For bookkeeper, secretary, and treasurer, we've got to cut one out. And. Yeah, I know, we take the bookkeeper out. And then we revise the total compensation per the agreement. So that's got to be adjusted.
What was the number on life insurance and cancer insurance?
That should pretty much remain the same.
Keep that the same?
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, just, just Eric, sorry, I want to butt in here again, but we were paying like 1,300 to amalgamate it for life insurance, and since we've cleaned it up. We're down to like $850 a month, so there's wiggle room there too if you needed it in another line.
All right.
So that's what, 10,200?
Right. And then you've got cancer insurance, which I.
Know what we do, let's leave it alone.
Let's leave it alone.
Let's leave it at 20.
Okay.
Now, we're getting into the chief left. Well, the question is whether they want to, want to increase any of these. Things like fire equipment and capital outlay. That was blank, but then we have.
They didn't give you any.
Yeah, I'll ask them if they've come up with anything. Wish list.
Got it. Be right back.
So we're moving past line items 23 through. 26, that, that remains the same?
Well, that's what you have to find out about the turnout gear and the uniform.
No, I'm looking at. Bookkeeper, bookkeeper compensation.
That's got to be adjusted because there's only two of them, and they're getting a different salary, so we'll just collect that. So what's, reflects is what they're doing now.
It's just that if we decided to go 1099, we would be in contractual in the 8202. So I would move them into those lines.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
And I have, I have Matt budgeted in, in my mind, I don't know if you agree, under maintenance of the building.
Okay.
Because, because that's, that's where Alvarez is being paid.
Okay. Yeah, all right, so that could, we could adjust that down, but I'm just saying is that we have to reflect that that's an extra cost this year we didn't have last year. I think that's running, what about, what you sent me, it's running a nine or 10?
Say that again?
It's running nine or 10?
Well, you know, he's doing two hours a day at $20 an hour, so I was asking you, is it 300? How many days a year is he doing it? Is, is he every day? Are we going to budget for, you know?
Yeah, he's here every day.
No, he's here every day. He's doing it seven days a week.
So we're going to budget for 15,000 then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey Eric, you were looking for numbers for, from the chief staff?
Yep.
It's going to be ballpark.
I'll get your final number, but use the $90,000. I think that's pretty close to what the line was last year. I got to get a final count on how many air bottles have to be replaced, how many bailout systems have to be replaced. Turnout gear that's expiring, so once I have that, I can give you a final number.
Okay, what about the, have you bought the additional? Extra sets for the designated people at this point?
Yeah, we did, we did order it, and then COVID came and the globe shut down for the better part of four months, so. We're back on a four to eight week turnaround time, so they should be coming by the end of September, early October.
But you haven't gotten them in at this point?
No, we have not gotten them in.
So turnout gear is 8225 and the budget's 60,000.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I just need to. Build in to that number separately than my 90, I think.
This under. No, that's not, 8216, is that what you're talking about? I don't see any 90,000 light.
It's ballpark. I'm not exactly sure what the number was. Whatever it is, give me, I will put it all together over the weekend and be able to give you a much better number.
Okay. All right.
I, I still waiting back like information from a couple of other people. I got to get you what the physicals are going to be. We have to talk about if we're going to add other testing to our physicals now that we have COVID, that they can do that when they come. So I'll get you some of the documentation when it comes in.
Chief, this is Terry. What we're looking at right now is the budget, so we're, we're just going to be interested in any line item that you've got touch on.
I understand.
I, I know that, I know that you're out of pocket tonight, so we can double back with you.
Yep, we'll get it to you.
Thanks.
Other items?
Eric? Can, can, did we discuss 8202 contractual expenses? Does that include JMC?
No.
It does not? Okay.
That's one thing we do have to check, but. The JMC is, would be.
Yeah, we lost you, Eric.
Well, I'm saying is that JMC would either be something we're paying towards clearing up the stuff from 16 with the planning board. Or would be an item towards the new building. Which would be budgeted out of building expense. He would not have anything to do with our normal operating budget. We have, may have, we have the budget for him, but I'm saying is it's not running, running budgets that we're involved in. It would involve, A, cleaning up stuff we're going forward.
Right, but we would pay for his expenditures until we bond out of that 8202. That's where we would pay him, we would pay. You know, Mitchell, that's all on that account.
And Lynn.
So, you know, the JMC letter dated November 14th, 2019, that was sent to you, Eric.
Yeah.
You, you add it all up. It's, it's somewhere around $195,000. You're aware of that?
Correct. But that's, that was mostly cleaning up stuff from 16 that should have been handled over the years. And when we discussed it, we said, it's necessary, we would have to move some stuff out of reserves to take care of it depending upon what the expenses occur. So that was what they thought it would run.
So let, let, let me ask you, Eric, did you, is, when you say cleaning up, does that include? There's a charge that, you know, I signed off on, $6,290 for DOT highway work permit. Is, is that what you mean by cleaning up?
Yeah, there was, there's, there's required, there's a raft of things. I couldn't pull from memory, I'd have to look them up. But there were whole condition, conditions. As contingent on the original work that was done for the planning for next door with the planning board, et cetera. And there were certain requirements of, of filing a plan for landscaping, DOT. Other plans of soil conditions, drainage, et cetera. Plans that had to be filed with the town to satisfy that permit process. Which should have been done back at that time, but were left to drag, and all they did was they simply extended the permit. But did nothing to clear up all the conditions of the permit.
Well, if that's what it is.
I mean, this is something that we, we committed to four years ago. And that's what we're trying to, to wrap up on that, and it's been going forward. Although I admit we haven't been pushing it rather rapidly at this point. But the answer is we, we did discuss it and said, if we went over budget, we would have to come out of building reserves.
Okay.
So when you say reserves, we could actually take it out of the. Building that we budgeted for this year to put in reserve 143,000. Because we don't necessarily have to put it in the reserve.
Correct.
We could just budget transfer it, because otherwise we'd have to have a referendum.
Okay. We could do it on a permissive referendum in any case.
But with, if you're just moving it within budget lines, you're okay, so that's something you want to earmark for JMC, maybe, the 143,000?
It's JMC. It's. It's Lynn. It's, I'm trying to think who else is involved. There was somebody who did some surveying work. There was a landscaper brought in, which may have been under JMC. To require with the seating stuff.
Yeah, that was all under JMC.
Oh, it's all under JMC, okay. I'm just saying is these are some of the items that were all conditional on that permit from 16.
Okay, and some of which have already been paid in this line item, Ed. We've already paid some of it, right?
Yeah, I know.
But you're saying there's additional that we can expect?
Yeah, definitely.
But I'm not sure how much. I could check with Lynn in the next couple of days and see what we've got left to, to do to finish it up. I think we're getting fairly near the end of it, but that's. I'm just trying to clear everything up that's in the past. Eventually, it's going to have to be done. But I'll make a note to talk to Lynn. Okay. Okay, it's seven o'clock. Okay, it's seven o'clock. So I guess we should switch temporarily, hold this off and reconvene on it and go to regular meeting.
Okay, who's present at the firehouse?
Mr. Murphy, Mr. Hoy, Mr. Oliveri, and Mr. Nicolay.
Okay. I, all right, so they're all working off of your computer? Is that how it's working?
I think I'm the only one that's got one running at this point. Although Terrence has one, he's working, but I think he's got his volume shut off.
Okay, so.
You just turn it on, want to talk?
I'm present. Terrence Hoy is present at the meeting.
That's fine. So when you, when you do have something to say, I know you don't want to get too close to each other, so just make sure that you kind of speak up a little bit since you're not working from each of your own computers, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Called order the regular meeting of the quarter fire commissioners. On September 10th, starting at seven o'clock. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. Tony, you want to lead us?
Pledge of allegiance. The United States of America, into the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rejoice in silence for those who suffered from the current virus and the members of the department that have procedures. Okay, it's open for public comment if anybody's listening in.
If you're interested in speaking, just raise your digital hand or type into the chat box and I'll open the phone, the phone line. Okay, Barry Zessi, I'm going to open your line. Make sure you unmute yourself.
All set.
Do you hear me now?
Yep.
I have a few questions, Eric. Number one, when are we going to stop having these Zoom meetings? Clearly, there's four commissioners at the commissioners' room. Your social distancing, if there's any issues, we can go to large room upstairs and make sure everyone involved is some distance away, including any member of the public. So are we going to do that soon or what are we going to do?
It's up to the board to decide. Next month, by state law, we got to have at least three commissioners in the session. I don't know. It depends upon how people, comfortable people feel. I personally would have no particular objection, but as it stands now, the school board is opening their meetings up, but with very limited number of people permitted in the auditorium. And the town board is running all of their meetings on a Zoom basis. So I'm not, not 100% sure what's the most comfortable way everybody's going to feel about doing this.
Last I heard, the town board was going till October 4th and then they're going to reevaluate.
Well, I'll talk with Jill and see and pass the information on to the board and then leave it up to the board to decide. I personally have no objection about doing that, but I'm only one vote.
Especially since a lot of important issues going on. And I think the public needs to come in person and see what's going on. Not everybody has Zoom access and not everybody is accessible. I have had some previous problems with my own Zoom as well as other people I know. Yes, Mr. Hoy?
Barry, how are you? I'll just say that regardless of what the town is doing or the school board or a separate board, separate jurisdiction, will make our own decision. And I agree with you. I think that perhaps we should determine how we can have meetings in public i- in a safe way in accordance with the state guidelines. So I would agree with you and I thank you for that question.
Eric, there's been going on about 16 plus policies that were supposed to be reviewed, updated and distributed to its members. Has that been done by the board?
No, it's primarily been my problem. I haven't had the time.
Okay, Eric, that's been going on, I think, for over three and a half years. And I think at some point, some of those are very important. They should be addressed. And I think one of the first things you said when you came on was you were going to delegate to other commissioners, have them reviewed with the chief and move from there. But I think still, it's an important issue. It's gone, going on for a while.
Well, a couple of them have been approved. We just have to publish them. And a couple of new things. And the other ones, it's a case that I have to, we did go over them briefly. And I have to make some editorial changes based on what was done. Send it back out to the board to review again. And I got to admit, it's partially my fault, but I've been working with, in the office with a lack of staff. And I've been spending a lot of time in the evening, so.
Two other points. Next year is going to be the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Is the board planning on maybe getting a small plaque for a firehouse out by the bell or doing something? We don't have to have a large memorial, but a nice, at least we had some small plaque honoring the 9/11 victims and and just basically saying what it's about.
Bring it up to the board. I have no objection as far as that's concerned, although the town, they have over in Millwood.
I understand that, but it'd be nice to have a small plaque like the one we have on the, at the bell that faces the firehouse. Maybe on the opposite side, about the same size. And I'm sure the chief's to work with you on that.
Barry, this is Commissioner Hoy again. Thank you. Great question. I would fully support that. Not only as a commissioner, a resident and a first responder on September 11th, 2001.
And again, I'm aware of our current memorial. And there were a lot of people that objected to where it was. They basically felt that we're putting our memorial into the woods. The original location was suggested to be a duck pond where it's more visible. So there were some objections to it and really some, some bad feelings about that. The last point I'd like to make is I know issues are coming up about the expansion of buildings, but we cannot continuously ask the public for support when they're not going to support us. Now, if they support us for the addition, I think that's fantastic. But if they don't, we should have Plan B. And Plan B should include doubling our budget to allow for renovation to our firehouse, for ADA compliance and other things that we needed here. Every year, as you know, goes on and on, the cost of this improvement or addition goes up substantially. We've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this. And I think we have to have Plan B. And we can easily raise the budget and justify that with only a public hearing. We don't have to go for a public vote on a dramatic raise. And we can use that funds to bring up our, our building to code, do some ADA compliance and do some renovations that we need. So again, the only point I want to make is we have to have Plan B. It would be fantastic and I'm sure everybody's going to try to support us with this addition, but if it doesn't get the vote we need, then we have to figure out to do something else. Raising our budget dramatically, excuse me, in the long run will probably cost the taxpayers more money than the bond issue over extended period of time. But we have, we have a responsibility to do, to do it and get ADA compliance. ADA compliance, we've been talking about since, I believe it's 2006 when it first came up. So it's time, you know, if we can't do through the renovations, it's time we do it on our own.
Okay.
Look into it.
We'll look into it.
All right. Thank you.
Barry, all great points. Thank you very much.
That's why I was chairman.
Anybody else want to make a, on a web to make comment?
There's no one else present at the moment?
Okay. In that case, chief's report was mailed me. I looked at it, but I didn't get a chance to print it out.
Oh, you got chief's?
Yeah.
I did. Let me pull it up. Just give me a second. Sorry.
Guys, I'll go through it. And if you need a copy of it afterwards, I emailed it to everybody about 4:30 this afternoon, so.
I know problems, like I didn't get it downloaded.
Yeah, I, I see it, chief. I'm going to open it up should anyone want to take a look at it here.
Because I'm in class and I got to get back to.
Yep.
So we had a pretty significant structure fire on Sunday night into Monday morning. It was really Monday morning at 12:56 AM, 25 Memorial Drive. Police officer coming up King Street spotted the fire. No alarm system. When the police got there, it was already well advanced. When the chiefs pulled up, it was already through the roof on the AD corner. A large volume of fire was in the, the AD and C corners of the, the structure. It was found out that it was being rented to a cable company that was a subcontractor for Cablevision. The fire load inside the building was extraordinary with electrical equipment, cable, you know, 300 foot spools of coax cable. It was unoccupied. Our guys did an excellent job of making quick work on the fire. We had it under control in about an hour. And then we continued to open up and make sure that we got all the hotspots. So, you know, between our own department, our mutual aid companies, nobody got hurt. Everything worked out well, so that was a big, big win on our part. We learned some lessons from it and so forth, which will get brought into our training program and make sure that that gets, you know, discussed, but for the most part, all went well. New business tomorrow. Apparatus and members are leaving Bedford Road Firehouse around 5:30 PM to go to the Mutual's Firehouse in Mount Kisco for a 9/11 ceremony. That will be firemen only. It'll be a very brief ceremony. And we participated last Sunday in our own 9/11 ceremony that was recorded and given to the town as part of the town's virtual 9/11 ceremony. So going back to Barry's point, I'm 100% in favor of creating something at the firehouse for us to do. And whether we do our own or do something with our own and the town. But I don't want to see us ever relying on somebody else to put together a 9/11 ceremony. We're the first responders. We're the ones that went. We should have something at our firehouse to make sure that we can commemorate that and remember those 343 people in the fire service that passed away. And that number has grown significantly from 9/11 related illnesses. So Barry, if you're still listening, I support that 100% and think that we should do that. Also, Tower Ladder 27, I'm sure Tony's going to bring it up. We're still having a problem with the tank. We're going to take the hose off it. We're going to send it out to Rustcon. Address that leak as well as a problem that we're having with the generator on it. So the Tower Ladder will probably be out of service for an extended period of time. Meaning I'm guessing it's going to be at least a week. And if history tells us anything, it'll probably be significantly longer than that. So that's going out. Membership, we're status quo. Actually, I'm at the training center. Somebody just handed me a membership application here today, so we'll process that for next month. You have the expenses in front of us. If you go to the alarms that are attached, we talked about it briefly because the last commissioners' meeting encompassed the beginning of that first week of August. But we had a total of 84 alarms, which is almost three to four times more than we have in a normal month. I'm looking at it real quickly. Our false alarm numbers went down by almost 9%. And our significant incidents went up by, by that same 9%. So 84 alarms in the month of August put us on our toes for, for lack of better word or phrase. So we continue to do that and you know, when people call for help, we're expected to be there and we do that, so. There are no future dates on the schedule. We're going to continue with our training regimen and so forth. The only thing that I'm going to ask you guys as commissioners is probably before the end of the weekend, there will be only one way that you should access the firehouse. You should come in the back lower door as commissioners or staff. There's going to be a table, or there is a table there where you need to take your temperature and you need to record it on a sheet that we're going to put out. Nobody's allowed in the firehouse without having their temperature taken. We're going to go on the honor system that you're actually going to do it and you're going to self-report it. But from, from this weekend going forward, if you guys come into the firehouse to do anything, whether it's district business or if those of you that are in the fire department, you got to have your temperature taken. We're going to do it for the department members as well. They can do it upstairs or downstairs, but they will not be allowed in the firehouse for non-emergency related instances without having their temperature taken. Robin?
All right, so, so that's going to be me because I'm there like four or five times a month. So just, can you just repeat that to me? Because I usually jump in and grab the mailbox.
Right. Don't use the side door. Come in the back door, the lower door of the two doors there. You're going to come in, there's a table there that's got masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, and it's got an infrared thermometer. There will be a clipboard with, you know, name, temperature, date and time. And you'll just sign in your name, the date, the time and what your temperature is. If you're below 100, God bless you, hang out. If you're 100 or greater, go home and let somebody know. But we, we need to keep track of who's coming in and out and at least have some semblance of of prevention before we allow anybody, because if it gets in the firehouse, it could wipe out the whole department, so.
And my FOB works on any door?
Any door, any door.
So I can just do that and then I can go, go the regular door I go in because I'm.
Going to walk behind the trucks and go right there. You don't have to go back out.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Can I just ask a question? So how long is that going to go on for, for the duration?
Until we tell you otherwise.
Okay, so that would mean, so if October, we go along with what Mr. Zessi would like, that would mean that anybody that went into that building for a meeting would, we'd have somebody stationed at the door taking the temperatures?
Unfortunately, I got to tell you, nobody from the public is allowed into the building.
Okay, so that, that takes.
I don't care if they're coming in, they could be on Zoom, but nobody can come, if you're not a member of the department or a district staff, you're not coming into the firehouse.
Okay, so that solves.
Issue and.
So that solves the October meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And we'll go from there. We're following, you know, state and federal guidance as it relates to critical infrastructure and emergency services. So we're not allowing anybody in. We don't even let our family, so.
Thank you.
That makes it very easy. That's all I've got. And I'll get you the budget stuff before the end of the weekend.
I wanted to ask you one question on budget. You purchased some new product. I was just looking here and I didn't know if it had an annual maintenance on it. What was it called? Oh, I can't find it. Target Solutions Learning LLC?
Yeah, so Target Solutions is our online OSHA training as well as other online training. There is, I think it's $40 a year.
So minimum.
Per user, whatever's in that initial agreement that we signed, that's the number. You got to look in it to see if they have a bump in it, you know, for inflation. I, I don't recall, but it's somewheres around that, so roughly, we, you know, and we can't nail it down because we're flexible and we're fluid. You know, our membership changes, but I would use 60 members as a, as a number.
Okay.
Less and it may be more, but I would use that for budgetary purposes, but yeah. The other thing also is, is I was contacted by Fidelifax, who does our background checks. They sent me a invoice electronically because they were sending it to Dana via email. So I told them to mail it to the district PO box and make sure that way, if people change and emails change, we don't have to worry about getting lost. At a minimum, you will get it in there and there should be a bill, I think, for 158 or $178 for Mr. O'Keefe, Dylan O'Keefe from the last month. So if you haven't gotten that yet, keep an eye out for it.
Okay.
The other thing is, is I'm just, the eye doctor, we require our fire apparatus drivers to get an annual eye exam. So they send you a bill. They're supposed to send me the results of their eye exam, whether or not they have to have corrective lenses and stuff. Sometimes I get them to me. Sometimes they send them with the bill. So just someone give me a heads up. If you do get one, leave it in the box and just say, hey, I left an envelope. There's a, you know, eye exam results for such and such, so I know to come down and check it off because. hey, I left an envelope. There's a, you know, uh eye exam results for such and such, so I know to come down and check it off, because um if people don't have that annually, they will be removed from driving. Um and I won't have to tell somebody you're removed from driving, and then they tell me, oh, I got my eye tested six weeks ago. Didn't you get the results? So.
So I haven't gotten any of the results, but I have gotten the bills. And just so you know, since we last spoke, there was one for Zessi.
Okay.
Okay.
Just so you know that those are coming and um everybody's annual date is different, so it's not like everybody comes due on one date.
Okay, and there's six of them? Six of them?
There were six already, but you probably have close to I would say fifteen.
That are gonna do it. Okay.
Gonna have it done, so.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
And you'll send me receipts?
Yep, if I get them, I'll send it to you, but they should be sending you the bill directly.
Yeah, I mean for the um expenses.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, chief.
Yep.
Commissioner Hoy here. Just uh two quick things. First, uh I just want to let you know that I'm very impressed with uh how you, your assistant chiefs, and all the firefighters have uh performed over the past weeks and months, particularly uh working with our close partners here in Newcastle, the PD, uh the council, uh DPW, and our partners with some of the utilities. So keep up the great work. And number two, uh I'm in total agreement with you with respect to um doing something uh for September eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh we can do it on our own, not only within the district, but within the fire department. So I agree with you one hundred percent on that.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then if you guys need me for anything else later on, just uh somebody give me a text and I'll come back into the Zoom, okay?
Okay.
Hi. You got his expenses? I actually didn't come on.
In particular, you don't have any big items you're anticipating in next year, though.
In terms of. I have some equipment that I want to replace. There are a couple more fans I want to get, and uh we're gonna have to replace a couple of thermal image cameras are coming to their end of life, uh some gas detection equipment. Most of it we gotta take care of. There'll be some, so you know, there'll be there'll be some expenses that are that are coming in for next year. So I I envision that whatever my number was last year, I'm gonna be pretty darn close to it. I have the bailout systems. I think I have, we bought ten, so that leaves another twenty-plus bailout systems at five hundred dollars plus on that. So yeah, there there'll be some stuff.
Chief, uh uh Mr. Terry again, your expenses did not come through. All we got was the uh tickle report.
You should, if you scroll down, there was two hundred and fifty dollars in expenses. There was uh some flowers for a funeral arrangement that we sent a few months back. And then we had training. Uh we sent one of our members to critical incident stress training for a hundred and fifty dollars, so.
I got it.
Hundred and fifty bucks.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, have fun.
Bye.
And you'll be sending us some stuff over the weekend.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion we can burst the chief. Two hundred and fifty dollars?
Two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh it was a hundred for a funeral arrangement and uh one fifty for training. Two two fifty.
Hold on, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Tony.
Tony.
Thank you.
All right. So let's see, that's a chief's report, treasurer's report.
Well, obviously, I didn't I didn't write that check because we just got these expenditures today. So he's not on the list that um you're posting, Judy, so we'll just put it on next month's list, the chief's expenses. Uh you got the list of checks that were written this month. Any questions, please ask. Um I paid a bond interest payment for September one, this this month, uh thirty-nine thousand and change, and um got a call from Westchester Bank saying that the rate was dropping from point six-five to point four-five, but still more competitive than than Class, which was her competition when um we stayed with Westchester Bank. That's that's it for me.
Um, you get my text?
Uh, no.
You didn't? Okay.
What's on it?
It's the pay to balance for the drapes.
Do you have a thing for paying the balance for the drapes? Okay, you may have had the same problem. So how would you send it out?
All right, well, nine thousand six hundred and eleven dollars.
Yeah, but when did you send it to?
Today.
Uh we've been having problems with the transmission.
Okay.
Um why don't you uh photocopy before we leave tonight, and we'll leave it in the drawer?
Yeah.
What we'll do is we'll uh photocopy it tonight before we leave. We'll leave it in the box.
If anyone has the capability of scanning, that would be great, because I'm actually out the door here tonight for a week.
I don't think we have the ability to scan it here.
Take a picture of it on your phone and send it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that. I don't particularly like the way it comes out on those.
Yeah, it's too dark.
You know, it's too dark or too light or too at an angle or something like that. And you read one's part and the other side is blank or.
Well, as long as you don't mind waiting the week, then that's fine. Just leave it in the box.
I don't think it's gonna make any difference.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all. I just wanted to know if you got.
Okay. Any corrections in the minutes?
I just need a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion, pay the bills.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Hi.
Carry five, nothing. Prove of minutes. Any corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Hi. Hi.
Carry five, nothing. Okay. Insurance. Nothing to report. Um we did have a um, one thing is, we did have uh Madison uh rejected on the uh one of the policies, but I got that corrected today. So that'll be forthcoming on the uh next month, but she's now back on the coverage.
I saw the email. Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
And I want to think for insurance, uh Diana Dion uh fixed the mistake from the deep motor vehicle for the antique. It said that we had insurance on the antique, so it was resolved.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Um anything on purchasing? Anything on technology? Um one thing I'm gonna do, um well, I'll do that on the communications. Um anything on trucks?
Okay, rescue twenty-three is gonna go on uh Monday, the twenty-first, to get serviced and inspected. Tower ladder twenty-seven, what the chief uh Russ said, it's gonna go down to Rustcon as soon as they take the hose off of it. And maybe gonna check the generator out and repair the tank, the water tank.
One question on this. If the if the ladder is gonna go out for a period of time, do we want to send the second truck out at the same time?
Well, that's that's just gonna be service. The rescue will be just uh.
A one-day thing?
It should be one day.
Yeah, it goes up the booster.
It's going the booster. It goes up the.
No, I just want to make sure that we're not in a situation where we got two vehicles out being fixed.
They take the hose off this week and and it goes to Rustcon on Monday. Maybe hopefully we'll get it back.
Right.
Well, I'm I'm I'd be more of a pessimist than an optimist.
Well, this time, I think they know where it is, and it's only uh bolts with a flange on it.
Okay.
So I think it's gonna be, the only thing is, they have to take the the flooring from the bed in the back, and that's the maybe the worst part of the job.
Yeah, you gotta get to it.
Yeah, but I think, you know, hopefully, maybe those get it back to us. But uh the the rescue is just gonna be probably one day.
Okay.
All right. Now, uh utility one five five and utility thirty-one, the van, were both inspected, and the utility was serviced, and he had to charge the AC. Now, the air conditioner on on the van, the lines are leaking towards the back of the van, and to change the lines, they would have to raise the body of the truck, of the van. It's a big job. That's why I want to try to sell that. It's a two thousand and three van, seventeen years old. So I'm asking the board um if I can sell the van and um buy a uh the utility truck, the twenty twenty-one Chevy uh thirty-five hundred utility uh with the, it's on uh Bossy's bed. And they actually dropped the price another four thousand one hundred. Originally, last month, I said it was um forty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars. Now it's dropped, it dropped down to forty-four thousand eight ninety-four. And by adding a couple of items to it, the total should be fifty-one thousand seven twenty-four.
Open or enclosed?
Open.
And this, we'd be getting rid of a van and purchasing a truck.
Like the one out here?
We move it later.
The only thing uh that will, that I want to put on it is um that the Tommy Gate, you know, the liftgate truck, and that's three thousand.
Losing the subcommunications.
Do you trailer it?
You guys are breaking up a little bit.
Can I speak louder?
I think it's the blowpipe, you know, you can provide for both. And then uh there's a locking system on the, and the LED dome lights on it. Uh the cabinets lock them. You know, like this one has with a beef up. And um the only thing I add to that, maybe um uh protective uh rack behind the cab, the window, like I did with this one, that's the only thing I would add to it. But the the radios uh will come out of the van and go to the utility. We're not gonna buy anything like radios. The only thing I might have to do is get a light bar, a couple of lights. That's it. It could go crazy.
You don't want to do it in close?
Nope.
You have any idea what you can get for the van?
I don't know. It's gonna be ten, nine. You know, it's in good shape. Doesn't have that many miles on it.
Yeah.
But it's getting older, and I do, even the guy said it's a big job to fix the AC lines. I think the body, raise the body up to get to it.
It's gonna get stepped off the porch?
It's off the chief's.
No, we're not gonna do fully, then turn around and switch it to something else.
I think the one, they want to use it more as um as a rescue type, you know, put jacks on it and stuff like that. And the other one would be like a utility, probably put uh the pumps on it, uh the generator, the hose, the hose, the.
Yeah, that's why I was actually gonna be, I was an enclosed one, because the hose will run, generator on, they'll be sitting outside.
They don't wanna uh enclose, because I think they feel it's gonna be too, too high and, you know, it's.
It's not what they got.
Talking about sitting it outside?
It'll be parked inside, but if you.
Yeah.
You're gonna lobby in the elements. With it open. I mean, and this stuff is gonna be sitting out in the open. That's why I actually just, plenty of a lot of backup. Enclosed one, and it won't sit higher than.
Be the same price.
And it won't sit as, sit as high as the ladder.
The only thing he would do for us um on the enclosed one, instead of having doors on it with the top with a liftgate, because we can get injured, he would put a, like a.
Roll up door.
A roll-up door in the back. It it's only sixty inches, the height, so it's five feet.
And with the helmet on, it's.
You know, it's it's.
And full gear, it doesn't make sense. Yeah.
The only person would be uh, you know, short guys, we'd ideal, but I kinda agree that we should just get the open one.
Wasn't chief talking, was the chief talking about opening?
Well, he wants open.
He wants open.
Yeah, or the whole chief staff, who said not to get it open.
Okay.
Are you, are you looking for a motion on this? Uh I I'll make a motion that you move forward with the sale of the van and purchase of the truck, subject to any of the final uh discovery on exactly what we want on it.
Okay, I'll second it.
Hold on, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, five, nothing.
And could I just um ask that we would use our um capital reserve trust budgeted funds, Tony, not not have to go to permissive render for a referendum, right?
Yeah, if that's easier, yes.
Yeah.
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 Right, because it's just a budget line, and we would just move it to uh purchase a vehicle, right?
Fine. Thank you. Uh let's see, we'll say. That's it on trucks.
Okay.
Communications.
Communications.
Uh tactical communication order to do screens for the fire horn. A couple of them were missing. And they're gonna come to do a service on the system and replace the backup batteries. And um the only trouble is that our tower ladder has to be here when he comes, because we have to put him in the bucket to go up. Up to place it, because they don't bring a, you know.
I know.
So if he calls me back, I'm just gonna have to make sure the tower ladder is here when he comes.
Okay.
But he was supposed to come in uh March or April of this year because of the virus. They could, they come out of Connecticut, and that's for some reason, they didn't want to come to us, you know, until they, now they they said they were gonna come.
Okay.
That's it on communications.
But I have one item. We talked about upgrading his phone in here, but I think what I'm gonna do is I can go to Verizon and have them take our messages that come in on this, and then we can dial into Verizon and pick the messages up. We don't have to be in the building.
Oh, okay.
So any one of us can access recorded messages on here over Verizon after I get it set up with the passwords, et cetera. So rather than spend money on this, we're gonna do it. The other question is, since we're apparently gonna continue with this study indefinitely, I'm gonna buy a center unit like they have in the town hall, which we would put on one of the chairs there, and it'll pick up all the speaking within the room, um and we'll shut off the audios on our computers and just rely on a central uh.
It's a good idea.
Speaking system uh in the center uh for communications, and then any public that wants to come in or anybody else, it'll be handled on that basis, because apparently we're gonna be in this thing for a period of time.
I agree with you.
Uh the price on that unit is probably somewhere on the price between a hundred and fifty and two fifty.
I'll make a motion to uh move that forward.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Hi. Hi.
Second, was that, who seconded it? Was that Brian?
Brian.
Thank you.
Um. House.
House. Well, as you can see, the curtains are up, you're finding.
They look, they do look good.
In the big room, they're up there, too, right? Basically, that's it, because nobody's writing me up anything, and I don't really come around, so. I am gonna start working on the message board that I was gonna start before everything happened, and gonna start on this stair chairlift, or stair lift again for the front hall here for all the people that can come up stairs. That's all I got in the works right now.
All right, anything on uniforms that turn that gear?
Uh yes, so I'm gonna get together with uh the chief and some of the assistant chiefs, and we're gonna make sure that we submit uh very good numbers for the budget. So I'll I'll get Russell here in the next day or two, uh and I'll take care of that. Other than that, nothing further to report.
Don't think we have anything on medical, physical. Nothing on compliance. Can we um can we shut the audio down, Carrie, temporarily? Will I say something to the board?
Uh. Uh, let me see if I could put the public in the waiting room? I don't think there's a way to do it in the middle of a meeting, sorry.
I'll do it later then.
Yeah.
Okay. It's only about thirty seconds, but I wanted to bring some. It's only about thirty seconds, but I wanted to bring something up, okay. Anything on engineering? Old business? Anything on new business? Anything on correspondence?
I checked the website, nothing has come in. I just wanna take a moment just to thank Carrie for really amazing, outstanding, the job she's doing and doing the Zoom for all of us. And I appreciate it, and I'm sure the community appreciates it as well, thanks again.
Absolutely, thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
No problem, and for putting up with all of our inability to work it.
Okay, so we'll move to adjourn this, however, we're gonna go back into budget afterwards. Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Murphy? Tony, second, hold on, favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Who seconded that, I'm sorry.
Tony.
Tony, great, thank you. And now the continuation of the budget is still open to the public, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Now, capital reserves, the amount we put aside last year, no particular reason to change those, unless somebody has some, wants something increased or not, any particular. Okay. Chief will give us an updated list on the thing. The one item, oh yeah, hydrant rental. We've exceeded the budget on the hydrant rental because we got a budget bill from Mount Pleasant for two years, and we hadn't budgeted for it. I'd like to increase that budget to a hundred and ten. We don't have enough emotion on it, but I'm just saying, to bring us more in the line with what the town may or may not, and what we, Mount Pleasant may look for.
What about back to town, and they gonna hit us with a bill like they did last year?
I haven't heard anything, and they haven't come forth to discuss it.
The only reason I ask you, cuz we just jacket ten, and they hit us again.
Well.
So we don't have any problem or arguments with them, I mean.
After we have the meeting, I'll discuss that again.
Okay.
On the, now, as far as the rest of the items are concerned, we appear to be within budget restrictions. Does anybody have any particular reason to assume that we should increase any of these budget items beyond what we carried last year?
I, I think it could be the same.
Okay.
I would agree, but in, in areas where we can obviously reduce it and, and, and move and adjust, we, we, we should, as we did earlier on a couple of items.
Okay.
So like, for instance, the Mount Kisco protection, where you have ninety-seven thousand, is that something that you've negotiated down?
Oh, that one, that one there. We've just, you're just continuing to pay them the money payment. And I've had discussions with the town manager, and he's not happy. But I told him, that's all he's gonna get in the way of a check, and I said, give us sixty days notice when you wanna pull out. And so we can do the necessary dispatch switches with sixty control. And he has not been forthcoming, so I have to assume that they're willing to take the sixty-three and let it go with that. But I did tell him that if we have the bond issue increase as a result of a new, new firehouse, we give him the increase, and he said, okay. So we'll just, we'll just basically plug in there whatever we collect in taxes for that particular section. It's probably gonna go up a little bit as a result of the revised taxes for next year. But the answer is, the sixty-three is all they're gonna get for this year, and they're not complaining apparently about getting the same next year. Okay, move, we adjourn, close the session down? Any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Hold on, favor?
Hi.
Okay.